So the first two items are no longer on the agenda, correct? Rachel?
That's correct.
Okay, we will call the meeting to order. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, April 16th. And welcome to everyone who's joining us. For purposes of members of the public, the first two items on the agenda are being postponed to a future meeting. So we'll proceed with the third item with it, which is a presentation regarding the automated collection system.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We do have Jeff Phillips here with us. I think he checked in already. We're going to have him go ahead and present. I know we, over the weekend, looked at some other projected numbers as well. So we'll start, we'll have him start out there first, and then we can add to the discussion from there. So Jeff, if you want to go ahead and take it from here and just let Terrell know when we need to go to the next page.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Welcome.
So thanks for the opportunity to visit again. Can you all see the presentation? There we go. It looks like the presentation's being shared again. Perfect. Go ahead and move to the next slide, please. Great. Well, yep, perfect. As Kim had mentioned, we had some conversations since the previous presentation of the recommended rates for the different services. And what I wanted to introduce you to was this slide where we talk about, as far as we look at the rows, the top row is the monthly yard waste curbside subscription fee. So as you recall, we had a base rate or a service rate of $25, and then a subscription rate for curbside collection of yard waste at $10. And there were some questions asked, well, what if it's different rates? Instead of $10, if it's less than $10, what is the additional fee that needs to be applied to the base rate or the service rate to help subsidize that program? And so what we've, what we've shown here is the cost of a subscription rate of $8, $7, and $6 per month. And so that would be an opt-in where a resident would, or a customer would raise their hand to say, "I want to participate in the yard waste curbside program," and I would be assessed an $8, $7, or $6 per month fee. But we wanted to identify what would that impact to the service rate? So for all customers, whether they opt into the program or not, what is the increase to their fee on a monthly rate? And so you can see that it ranges between 55 cents per month to $1.15 per month, depending on whether it's an $8 subscription fee or a $6 subscription fee. And these fees, we did several different analyses, but this, the results that are shown here are based on recovering the cost of the cart and providing revenue sources for the continuation of the program within the year. So that, within one year, the cost of the carts would be recouped within one year, based on these rates. So then you look at the very bottom there. So the total per household per month, if I'm participating in the yard waste program, would be $25.55 to $26.15. I'm sorry, that would be the, every household, whether they're participating in the yard waste program or not, that would be the increase, yep. And if you, of course, if you're wanting to participate in the yard waste program, you'd have that additional $8, $7, or $6. And so that just provides, we talked about $10, and like Kim had said, there was conversation, well, what if there are different rates? How might it be structured such that the two different types of revenue streams are supporting the program? So are there any, are there any questions regarding this slide?
So to sum clear, everyone would pay, under the $8 scenario, for example, everyone would pay $25.55, and then the opt-in additional is $8.
Correct.
Yeah, Your Honor, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. And then Sarah IC has a question too. So we'll go with Grant and then Sarah.
Yeah, so Jeff, you mentioned that this is a one-year cost recovery for the yard waste carts, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is there then an expectation that there would be some cost reduction or cost reduction pressure out in year two, three, and four?
You typically don't see that in programs because you'll have continued operational costs that will continue to increase, as well as at some point cart replacement and cart maintenance costs that these, these will assist in covering. And these fees aren't just covering the cost of the cart. It's covering the cost of the service of driving around and collecting material.
Right, it's operations, maintenance, and capital investment recovery is what that's all recovering. Yeah, okay. I was really just trying to bait Steve to see if he had a more complex financial question.
Not now.
I have more of a, kind of a practical question. Did we consider, like, rather than having it an opt-in, having it as an opt-out scenario? So the fee is, under the $8 additional would be, you know, $33.55, but you could save $8 by opting out.
I think that's-
There's a different perception with, that comes with that.
Well, later, later on in our presentation, we had, we had several different options. And one of the options was to answer Council's question of, hey, what if the base rate or what if the service rate pays for the program? What is that going to be to the month, to the monthly subscriber rate or to the monthly user rate? And in that regard, there, there would be households that would raise their hands to say, "I don't want to participate, or I can't participate. Do not give me a cart." But they would still be paying for the program because we would need everybody to pay for the program to be able to subsidize the anticipated costs of the service. And in this case, I think, I think we're kind of talking the same thing in that if I choose to not participate in yard waste curbside collection, my base rate, again using the $8 column, would be $25.55. So I'm sort of opting out. And if I opt in, then I would have to pay an additional $8.
That's, that's what I'm saying. Okay. All right, Sarah has a question, and then Steve.
Maybe I'm ahead of the game here in your presentation, if there's, since you haven't seen more to come. But is, is this per year? Is this going, is this going to be a year-round program? Or is it going to be like it is now where it's just certain months? Did we decide that or finalize it?
I, I believe just for billing purposes, we had talked internally that it would be, it would be good to just make it a monthly fee. But when the service is provided was modeled at your current schedule.
So the, they were paying all year, but we're still only having pickup for certain times of the year?
Right, so it's, it's akin to what other communities do where they do an annual sticker. And so you think of it, it's, if, if we use $10 as an example per month, to participate in the yard waste curbside collection would cost $100, $120 per year. But to marry it up with the other fees and how, how it's going to come out from the billing department, it seemed that it was, made more sense to bill it at a monthly rate.
So it's, so if I'm, if, understanding it right, it's, it's the nine, whatever, say it's only nine months. It's the nine-month cost spread out over an entire year, or whatever it is. The, it's the cost of actually collecting it over the time period that we do collect it, but it's spread out in payments over an entire year.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and Mayor and Sarah, we, we would like with any program, I mean, if the weather conditions are right and it's, it's, it's warranted. I mean, if, if, you know, if it's snowing straight from December through March, then it's, we would have the ability to back off. But if it's, it's kind of like what we had this, this year where it was very mild and, and people were able to go out and do it, we would, we would have the ability to flex and, and meet the needs of the community. So it's not, it's not, it's not set in stone that we are only running certain months throughout the year.
And it sounds like, it sounds like that happened in the city last year, that there was an extension of the service just because it was still nice out.
Okay. We'll watch the rest, and then I'll just keep my questions.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Jeff, at the last meeting two weeks ago, you talked that you estimated only about 30% of the households would be using the yard waste curbside. Is that the, is that the approximate number you used in coming up with these amounts?
Yes, well, what, yes.
Just one other statement I'll make just for the benefit of the other City Council members is I did request some information from Leanne related to, I don't know if this will come into play in our discussion, but I could not, I was trying to tie out the revenue numbers from Michael Malloy's projections that he gave us a couple of weeks ago. And I couldn't tie it out. Leanne sent me a number. Just to let everybody know, Michael Malloy's numbers only used the $25 per month amount. So he was not using any amounts revenue in there for, related to the yard waste. So I don't know what bearing that has on it. It will make Michael Malloy's numbers obviously come out better once we finalize these numbers because everything we're talking about is obviously above the 25 per month. And anything for yard waste would be added into that and make all of those projections more positive. But the only reason I bring that up is if decisions are being made based upon Michael Malloy's projections, again, that was based on only $25 a month and nothing for yard waste was included in there. So I don't know what bearing that has on your calculations or the numbers that you came up with, Jeff.
Steve, Jeff, really quick, I'll, I'll jump in just, once we get to direction, and Leanne can correct me if I'm misspeaking. Once we get to direction here, what we're going to do is, Maloney can update his, his model on the art, on the sanitation side. We do have to bring all those utility rates back to Council anyway. So that would be reflected when we bring that back. And, and ideally, we'd like to be able to bring that back probably the next round of Council meetings. We do want to make sure that we're advertising appropriately to the community as, as part of the upcoming messenger.
The only other thing that I would add is to bear in mind that the model that we were using with Michael Maloney is the budget that was put together by the Public Service Department. It does not have all of the inputs, per se, that SES used. We did not get to that level of a deep dive with SES to say, "Okay, we need to add some expense here and some revenue here." When I had had the conversation with Michael, Jeff was actually on vacation. When we had more of a deep dive conversation, Michael gave the direction, "You really only need to worry about the base rate because there would also be expenses that would need to be added to your model."
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
Okay. I don't see other, other questions, so please proceed.
Okay, well, next slide, please. And so this is, this is just a reminder for where we were two weeks ago, where it's a standard service, where households are paying for weekly recycling and garbage collection at $25 per month per household. And you would opt in to the yard waste collection, curbside collection program at $10 per household per month. And that $10 is covering the cost of, of that service in relation to going and collecting the material. Next slide. So option two is answering the question of, okay, well, what, what if we don't have a subscription fee for, for yard waste? If, but we want to include it in the service rate? What is the potential impact to that service rate to allow that, that program to be offered to everyone? One of the first things that happens is we go from a 30% participation rate estimate to a potential 100 participation, participation rate. Not in the sense that they might be setting out that cart, but that they may want a cart delivered. So the capital cost increases. And then there's the, the model trying to determine, well, what's the cart cost recovery? Whether that's one year or two years. So that's the difference between the numbers that you see on the side. If the intention was to recover those cart costs within two years, the households would be paying $28.70 per month. If the intention is to recover those costs, and again, the other maintenance and operational costs that we talked about within one year, then that rate is $30.58 per household per month. One thing to note here is that you then, with the, with this particular option, you don't, there's not a good way of understanding who might be participating. So therefore, crews are having to drive by every household to see if they're participating that particular week or not. Rather than if it's a subscription program, we have an address and we can build efficient routes to that. So with that comes additional costs with wear and tear on, on streets, fuel, fuel emissions, emissions because of those vehicles. And it might mean at some point, depending on the participation and the volume of participation, that you would need to borrow other crews, other vehicles to meet the demands of the collection. And in talking with staff, it might get to a point that, wow, participation is really high and we need another truck to service that. Okay, next slide. And these next two slides really are taking a look at, well, okay, we presented the $10 subscription program. Well, what, what if we, what if it was $5? And so taking a look at what's that split between a subscription program and the base service rate? And so the, if it's a $5 per household per month subscription fee, then obviously the rest of the money that is needed to operate the program is then subsidized by increasing the standard service rates. And so this, this is showing that the cart cost recovery, what the rate would look like if we did that in two years. And so that the household, per household per month would be $25.89 per month. And then again, if you opted into the yard waste collection program, you'd pay $5 per month. Next slide, please. And if the car cost recovery was to be, was to be done in one year, then the base service rate would need to increase to $26.45 per household per month, with no, obviously no change in the monthly subscription rate of $5. Next slide. So as we talked about two weeks ago, we wanted to highlight as the recommendation that was provided of establishing an equitable service rate system of $25 per month for the weekly collection of garbage and recycling within a subscription rate of $10 per household per month. And we have those other slides, that, those other options that were listed previously. One thing, one thing to note about option two as well is, I talked about the additional capital need for those carts in that you would need, you likely would be in a situation where you're providing more carts than there would be people participating in the program. So the capital costs are going to go up. As those capital costs go up, certainly that impacts the future, the, the future schedule for purchasing other capital items. For instance, one, one big item near on the horizon is that grinder. So as the, as the capital increase demands initially upfront, it certainly impacts what's going to happen down the road. Let me stop there and see if there's any questions.
Jeff, Jeff, this is Ryan. If I can just ask, well, first of all, we ran these other scenarios based on the conversation that occurred last Tuesday. Just the feedback that we got from Council during that meeting about the $10. So we wanted to run, run through these different scenarios to try to be responsive to Council and provide as many options as we could. We initially ran the all-in, so the full subsidy of the yard waste, and then we ran at the $5. And like Jeff and Kim mentioned, over the weekend, we decided to go through and do the six, seven, eight dollar amounts as well. I'm going to ask either Kim or Leanne if they can quickly just come in and just re-explain the one versus two-year buyback of the carts because this is important as we think about our budget process and everything that we've worked very hard to do to make sure that we've got integrity in our CIP as well as our asset replacement schedule.
Yeah, I can talk a little, I can talk a little bit about that, and Leanne can finish or add anything that I may be forgetting. But I think the important piece, the difference between one and two years is that the one year actually continues to, to make us whole. So when we have the recommend, the original recommendation of the base fee at $25 and then the yard waste opt-in fee at 10, you know, that is less risk for us when we think about our equipment, our equipment reserve replacement. Because right now, the carts that we, the carts that we are, those initial carts on the onset of the automation is that we are paying for those carts out of our reserve, out of our equipment reserve, our asset management program. Those, that's how those carts are being paid for initially outside of the yard waste cart. So then we certainly have those projections that add that $10. This is really the one year that, as we get ready to replace the grinder, which we have set for fiscal year '26, the grinder, we needed to probably be replaced a long time ago. However, we're needing to just kind of baby that along. We're trying to write, set our fees so that we can get all of our equipment in, in the appropriate cycle. Very similar, but you've heard in regards to snow, our, our snowplows and, and along with our garbage trucks too. So we're just trying to get everything to fit into, into the same guidelines that we're using for all, all other enterprise departments. Two years, if we go with the two-year, then that just pushes that replacement of the grinder out. And if, in, in that projection that we have for an additional garbage cart after a year in. I think the only thing else I would like to clarify, especially lending to Steve's question earlier. When it comes to the cart purchase, we've plugged in $1.8 million in the DA Davidson model. That was the assumption that SES provided under the assumption that 30% of the population will opt in. Obviously, supply and demand behavior, we cannot predict. So it will be whatever it ends up being, and then we'll have to adjust accordingly throughout the year. But that was kind of important for Council to understand is, it, we've programmed in $1.8 million for the cart purchase. If we end up with more opting in than that, that's more capital upfront, more carts we'll have to purchase, which spends down our reserve. And that's kind of the fine line that we're kind of toying with at this point. Is that reserve?
Just one thing to also know is that we will, I mean, the, the budget process that we've built, as, as the Council's become more familiar over the last couple of years, this is part of the annual process to review the, the models, to review the financial performance, to review the, the operational performance, and then make any sort of recommendations that are needed to Council. So we're not going to set this and forget it. We're going to, this is something along with everything else that we've been doing to make sure we're actively managing it and monitoring it.
Go ahead, Steve, and then Grant.
Yeah, so when we work on, talk about all of these numbers, first of all, I'm assuming the staff kind of recommend the, the options that we consider the most strongest should be with the one-year payback versus the two-year payback. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, second question. I'm also going to assume that the lower the number for the yard waste, the higher the percentage of people that may opt in for that. And, but all of your projections, like I think Leanne was referring to, everything at this point is still based upon 30% of them opting in. So the lower we go, the higher that percentage. Jeff, do you anticipate that that relationship is accurate?
So the, the, right now, we're, we're using the average participation that is occurring right now. So I don't anticipate, I mean, and right now, it's included in their base rate. So if they're paying a little bit more, I, I guess, I, well, we would see in that scenario, but I would anticipate that the percentage might actually decrease. And that, well, now I have to pay for this. I, I don't want to participate in that program. And I still always have the opportunity to take material to, to the compost site. So that's why it's, it's very difficult to be precise. Where, where we can be really precise is the garbage and recycling participation rate, right? That's, that's going to be pretty much every week for everybody.
But if we go, say there's a difference between $5 a month or $10 a month for the yard waste, for the yard waste container and service, you're not anticipating that that overall percentage will change much because of the dollar amount?
We, we, I, I'm not. We don't have anything built in the model to, to measure that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Grant, and then Randy. Grant, you're, you're muted.
That works to everybody's advantage occasionally. So one of the observations I made to Ryan the other day is that, you know, we're fundamentally changing our pricing model and communicating that to our residents. And the other thing that we're doing is we're really drawing out and putting a spotlight on the true cost of delivery for curbside yard waste services. And in the, the, the six, seven, and eight-dollar scenarios, those are just variations of what we are in theory doing right now. And that is all, all residents or all households are subsidizing the, the subset that are taking the yard waste service. Now, I, I know there's some costing and cost recovery difficulties that aren't making us whole. But I think really that the questions that come to mind is, are twofold. To what degree are we going to have year in and year out pricing stability so that residents have some budgets, budgeting certainty year in and year out? And maybe the more fundamental question is, is it at all logical as we ramp in this program to maintain reduced levels of subsidization by all residents in order to get this curbside yard waste program enacted?
I, I guess I have a comment to, one, one additional thing with that is you're exactly right. Is that we, we approach this to be as economical as we can and looked at the, the cost of the programs and then different ways to produce the revenue to pay for those programs, plus the debt deficits and continued operations. And with that, one, one- And with that, one, one thing that I wish that I would have, uh, thought of two weeks ago was that the residents, I may not, I think there was a comment of, hey, I don't always participate in the yard waste program, but I want the option to, uh, to participate in the program occasionally and you currently do. I mean, there, uh, you, you can call the city and, and have a, um, uh, a special pickup for, um, yard debris and for, for brush pickup. So that might, that's where, that's where someone's raising their hand to say in the sense that, look, I, I need to participate in the program occasionally. You have that opportunity, you don't need to prescribe, subscribe for the whole year. Uh, you could just participate in that service. So Grant, I don't know that I answered, answered your question. I, I was just making a comment.
If I, if I can, Grant, um, so the, the question, the answer to your question about the predictability, that is, that is the goal that we have been striving for as we revamped our budget process. And I, I probably sounded like a broken record now. Uh, my apologies for that. But as we build these systems, uh, using the analysis from Leanne and Michael Maloney and incorporating that into the annual budget process, we will be able to provide, uh, detailed analysis to the community that is presented to the council as part of the budget process. And that, um, we can communicate that out, uh, for the upcoming year. That's going to do a couple of things. That ensures that we're looking at our programs on a regular basis, that we're adjusting, we're, we're monitoring it, we're adjusting the, the expenses and making sure that the revenues do align with those expenses. I think the council knows that we will, we have, uh, over the last couple of years have made a, um, made several, um, reorganization, um, efforts to reduce our operational costs. So we'll continue to do that. Um, and then obviously, uh, advertise as, as best as we can, um, through the communication tools that we have. So, um, and, and by doing that, that's going to also help eliminating the spikes, uh, that I think we talked about uh, last, uh, last work session. So that's the goal of the predictability, um, for our community. With respect to the less, less of the subsidization, um, the, obviously, the, the lower the, the lands, the yard waste rate is, the more that the community is subsidizing that service for others. So if, if it, if it's, um, the, the closer you get to the $10, the less subsidization that's going to occur. Obviously, this is a brand new program for our community, so we want to be sensitive to the, to the cost on that. One thing that we talked about and, and we failed to, to bring it up, uh, until this point. Um, and that is that these are enterprise funds, meaning that they are not, um, the operations are not supported by property taxes, so the rates are what is paying for this service. So the, so as the council deliberates and gives us the direction on what is that? What, what is, what do you think is a acceptable entry point for this program? Um, that will ultimately determine how much is being subsidized or not.
Yeah, just, just to follow up comment on that.
I just didn't want to forget about Randy. Okay, go ahead.
Just, yeah, and this'll, this'll close off my stream of thought at this point. You know, going to this defined service delivery model where we isolate all of the cost elements and, and, and the recovery, um, requirements. Um, I mean, so we, we eliminate variables. We, we now begin to understand what our cost support is, that becomes a known. We have the census of residents who are participating, that becomes a real, uh, hard data known. The route requirements to support them becomes a, a hard known. And finally, whatever the labor commitment and the equipment commitment we need to do in order to pull this off properly, that becomes a real known. So I'm all in favor with thinking about curbside yard waste pickup as a defined unitary service. Um, I, I'm just back at, you know, how do we ramp this in, um, and, um, do so effectively and as fairly as we can? So those, those are my comments.
Okay, Randy?
Mayor, my question was answered, so I no longer have one. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Anyone else have questions at this time before we move on?
I don't really have a question. I guess, how many more slides, how many more slides do we have in this information before we discuss about it? Cause I think I have some more input than I have questions maybe. Um, but I don't know if this is the time or if we're going to wait a little bit. We've got more to come.
I think the ne- the next few slides are just basically talking about next steps. Um, and, um, so I, I think there's two more slides. So I, I can rack, wrap up real quick here if you'd like.
Yeah, let's do that. And then, then we'll come back to Sarah's input and see what else everyone else is thinking.
So kind of the next steps is, uh, to, uh, work to lock in a service rate, uh, so that that can be then communicated to the residents. Because very soon we need to, uh, roll out the, uh, cart procurement. And we want to understand what types, what size of carts people are wanting and also understand how that yard waste, this yard waste program is going to work. So all of that can be communicated in advance upfront. And we have, uh, multiple different strategies of getting that information out to the public and then also getting that, uh, their, their input back so that the appropriate carts can be pieces secured. Also, uh, there's a recycling, uh, cart grant application that'll help pay for the carts. It's not going to pay for all of the carts, but it'll, obviously it'll focus on, uh, the cost of the carts for the recycling carts. Um, and then there will be some route optimization that'll occur with everything to begin in September. So the services are anticipated to, uh, uh, be initiated within the community by September. And so that's, that's my wrap up.
Okay. So, uh, just before we uh, have any, uh, further questions, what, what's, uh, from, from the staff perspective? And, and Jeff, what are you looking for tonight in terms of direction or what are you looking for?
Yes.
Sorry. Go ahead, Kim. No, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, really, we just do need to get to the, making some type of determination or having some confidence in what fee structure, uh, that we will, that we'll be able to roll out with.
So are you looking for a consensus around one recommendation tonight? Or is that come on Thursday? Okay. Cause then we'll vote on it on Thursday, is that?
It'll be part of our, all of our overall utility, utility cost, um, that Ryan mentioned that we'd bring back in May.
In May, okay. So, but you do want us to end up tonight with a consensus around one, one option?
Correct.
The preferred way, yeah.
Yep. And we know, you know, staff's, you know, certainly staff's initial, um, initial recommendation is option one with the $25 base and then the $10 yard waste. However, we do understand that, you know, council would like to see, um, you just some, a little bit ease into the yard waste portion of this. And so we understand that. And that is why we, you know, shared with you the different, those different levels, whether that's five, $5 or $8, whatever that range, we do understand that. We do though, would, if, if we do that, we'd really would like to stay with that one year versus the two years. So those, those are really the things that we're looking for tonight.
And, and the, the idea is, um, get the consensus from council, then we can start working on all our marketing and educational materials. And we've got, uh, the, the first big one is this weekend with the city showcase. So we would, we would make sure that we're, we do plan on having information. And I believe carts at the city showcase to, so our residents can see and, and touch and feel, um, what, what their options are and, um, and this is going to be a important detail for them as well.
Okay, so council, what, what are your thoughts?
I, Jeff, if we can, mayor, no, just mayor, really quick, if we can, um, maybe if we can just go back to that first slide, if it's, if, if we can still see those, um, if, if that's, would be helpful to council. Uh, we can, we can certainly go back to one slide, Terrell, please. You got that one?
Yeah, that's, okay.
I think, I think everybody's familiar with the 10 and with the five. And we can, we can flip through slides if you'd prefer, but, um, uh, this gets to Councilman Harper's point of less subsidization, uh, if that's the right term. So I'm going to mute myself for the benefit of everybody.
Hand up.
All right, go ahead, Sarah.
Okay. Here's my, here's, I'm trying to wrap, just my colleagues know where I'm at or my thought is, and you know, I I, I, I rely on the knowledge and background a lot of you have. But am I correct, did I see in one of our other pieces of information that right now it's $20, right? Our residents pay $20 a month? Okay, so just in the rollout, so just rolling this out to the community, um, we're going up $5 per month. Okay, $60 a month, everybody's paying that who gets garbage collection, right? I like walking this through like, yep, okay. So I guess it's, well, that's a jump that I, I hate to see happen. Um, I don't know that people understood that's going up that much with automated. I think they like to see it. I've heard from neighbors and others I'm talking to who came from other communities that had it. We're like, oh, it's about time, can't wait. So I think it's explain, you could kind of explain why that is. I have a really hard time with these numbers on the yard waste. And, and I know I hear other communities do this and whatever. But, and I think when I'm talking to somebody and I'm hearing and I'm saying, okay, we're taking away a service that you currently have. Now we're charging you more significantly for something you used to have included. Um, yeah, you can opt out of it. It just, I mean, I, I get it, but it just bothers me. I mean, in some of these scenarios we're talking, your, your overall bill just went up $15 a month under the option one recommendation. If you have your, it's $15 a month for something, but partially the largest part of it used to be included. And that's where I struggle explaining that to people, why that is of value to them. That we're not ra- you know, we're raising, 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 raising. I, I just, anyway, I know we have to, and I know people can opt out on and on and on. I also know we subsidize parks. Not everybody uses the parks. We all play for parks. We pay for roads, we pay for, I mean, that's commu- that's part of community. Um, is that you're all kind of opting into things that you don't always use everything of. So I'm struggling where I come down in the middle of, of that piece of it as well. So I'll go, I listen, I'm listening to my colleagues on where they think this is. But I know from a staff perspective, when you're looking at this, what works in budgets or what works with making things on paperwork, that's one piece of it. But then I also, like, we're, I have to be out there telling people and I have to be out there answering it when somebody's calling and, and very angry. And y'all are really good about helping us word that, but we're still, we're still the ones that are going to vote on this and to try to explain it to people where this is coming. So, um, I've struggled and I've looked and you've all been really good about all these different options. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues and see where, where they want to go. But I think that's the, the one side of it is one thing, but it's the yard waste piece. Not that people have to take it, but the fact that we're taking something away and charging more. So.
Okay, so Ri- Ryan, you have something to to say about this?
Yeah, thank, yep, thanks, mayor. Um, and this is, uh, just, uh, just, uh, councilwoman Mensah mentioned the, the yard waste. And just one thing to, to share for, uh, the viewing audience and, and, um, the, the, the mayor and council. And that is that, and, and I, councilwoman, councilwoman Mensah and I've talked about this quite a bit, about the perceptions of the, the community. So I'm very sensitive to, to her points and where she's coming from. The, and, and this ties into the budgetary efforts that we've gone through these last couple of years. The, the reality is that the service that has been provided over the years to the community has been on, has not been charged properly to support the operations. And in part, and, and that, that is partially why, um, or, or one of the, one of the results of that is, is, is likely, um, how we have the fleet. Um, we've got a very aged fleet, um, and, and I, I certainly understand that, you know, there's nothing that we can do to unchange the, the past. But ensure that everything that we're building moving forward, um, is being done, um, based on data and, and is, um, that we're, we're making sure that these enterprise funds, these, these business functions of the city are, are, are supporting themselves appropriately. Um, Leanne's got her hand up. I'm sure she's also going to talk about debt coverage and some of the other things that, um, get factored into this. But with, with public services specifically, there's new fleet, um, the new facility, uh, the automation. Um, so there, there's, there's costs that have been have, that have been added. Um, and, and the, the rates for sanitary sewer, yeah, the, the sanitation. Those are all tied into, uh, that's how a lot of these services are paid for. But, but certainly understand councilwoman Mensah's point. She and I've talked about this quite a bit from the standpoint of perception. Um, and that's one thing that we've talked about internally with our team about making sure that our communication and outreach is, is very clear to the community, um, and, and help explain, um, how those numbers all line up.
Well, I just think, I mean, and even beyond perception, I mean, it's reality, you know, this, our, our residents now are the ones that are going to absorb what we have to do. And is that in one year? So are we making up for everything in a year? And again, I'm not, I'm not the, I'm not a CP, I mean, I, I don't have the number pieces that Steve have or the project numbers where the grant has, but that's the heartburn. I mean, is, can everybody on here stand with your neighbor in Marion? And explain why this is a good thing? Now, it is a good thing and I'm not talking about the garbage and recycling. I get that. It's, I'm talking about the yard waste addition to this. So I'll zip it now and let my other colleagues speak, cause I, I don't think we've heard from Gage and others, so.
Okay, well, let Leanne, uh, add her comments and we'll go back to Gage.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of things, Sarah, cause I, initially, you know, when we're looking at it as staff member, I live in Marion, I had some of the similar thoughts. Um, one thing that SES pointed out to me numerous times and it's something that I forgot and it may not be relevant to everybody, but bear in mind that you're also doubling the size that is provided for garbage. So obviously, if you're one of those residents that never buy a garbage sticker, you are just paying more. But a lot of those households might be buying one or two garbage stickers a month. And one garbage sticker is $2.50, two is $5. Some residents might even be buying one a week. They're going to save money with this option. Um, I don't know that I necessarily want to highlight that, but, um, when it comes to the big increase, where some of that big increase is coming from is the residence ability to recycle more with that larger recycle container. And recycling more makes us more socially conscious, but also comes at a bigger sticker price when it comes to the tipping fees at solid waste agency. So actually a large part of that increase is recycling more.
Increase in the yard waste? The $10?
I'm talking from the 20 to 25.
That's where Sarah's, that's where Sarah's hung up is on the $10 yard waste that never existed. And now we have to add that and tell people why they're getting that.
And that's in relevance to the capital pieces that were under, under being paid for. And I wish I could tell city council, hey, we've got enough reserve. We can do, uh, gradual upwards. But we have a debt instrument on that now for the public service facility and we have to make sure we meet those loan covenants. So that's where we're at.
Yeah, uh, Gage, uh, just allow me just one second to add something. One thing I thought about over the weekend is that, you know, I now personally buy the, the paper bags for yard waste. That's a, that's a cost I won't have to incur. You know, regularly buying the, the bags for, for the yard waste. Uh, go ahead, Gage.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just say we're kind of where I lean now because I, I agree with Sarah's concerns. Um, and I kinda had, I was in the same boat and am in the same boat last time we had the meeting and talking with folks, uh, last weekend over the weekend. I really lean towards that option three and really prefer the yard waste to stay in that five to six dollar range personally. And the reason being is one that, that sticker shock that people will have initially, but I'm also okay with the general. Standard service rate being, uh, another dollar or so higher, because. One thing I think about is, this is, this is a change that people have been asking for, for quite some time, the residents. Um, I think it's good for residents, I think it's really good for our staff that, that do the work of, of colle- doing the collection every day. Um, and there are some cost savings that, that come on that end, right, with, with automated garbage trucks, not having individuals. Getting out at each household and, and picking up heavy barrels of, of, of the garbage and the recycling and the yard waste. Um, the fuel efficiency of having new trucks, uh, the wear and tear and the maintenance there, um. But I also think, you know, you, you, before people, certainly people own, own their garbage carts. So there is kind of a, you know, you're essentially renting the garbage carts too, and you're renting bigger garbage carts that have wheels. And these are things that people have wanted for quite some time, to my understanding. Um, however, yeah, I, I'm really not a fan of the ten dollar yard waste opt-in, I like that five to six range. I think when you look at that as an annual cost, I think that's more digestible and understandable for folks that, that will use that, even. If you're only using it a couple of times or a few times a year, that cost might be worth it after raking a bunch of leaves for the trees that we don't have anymore. But the grass clipping is more so and, and people cutting, um. Shrubs and brushes that grow brat back, so that's kind of where I am sitting right now, I don't know how my colleagues, uh, feel, but that, that's my perspective at the moment.
Okay, so just, just be clear, Gage, which, which are the? What's the standard fee or, your?
For the yard, for option three with the yard waste, opt-in beating at five or six dollars, so whatever one. Because I can't see the other slides right now, but whatever ones, I agree with the one-year cost recovery announced, I totally understand that. That perspective, so, um, if it's option three, is that cost recovery for the five-dollar yard waste? Is that cost recovery for the one year, that twenty-six forty-five number, right?
Yes.
So, around, I, I'm, I'm, I'm personally pretty comfortable with, I think, like I said, I think a lot of residents. Have wanted this upgrade in the service, and I think it's good, good for the residents, but also good for the staff that, that do that work out there every day.
Okay, uh, Will, we haven't heard from you, and then we'll go to Steve.
I'm in the same boat as Sarah and Gage for that matter, um. And, and keep in mind too, we pay our, our, uh, water bill, garbage bill. Every two months, so in reality, it's going, your bill would go up thirty dollars. And then keep in mind too that we're discussing raising a lot of the other fees, which were, if I remember correctly, nine. Dollars a month, so in reality, your bill's gonna go up fifty dollars every two months. And then the water department said they were doing a three percent increase, I also, if I remember correctly, so there's even more every bill, so over fifty dollars a month. If you opt in at ten dollars for, so anyway, um, I agree with Gage, the three B is what I called it, twenty-six forty-five. Uh, for everyone a month, the five-dollar opt-in cost and the one-year payoff, that's what I think I am leaning towards out of all the options.
Sarah, is that where you're at too? Just for the, for our understanding.
Well, yeah, there are the six dollar, I could probably convince to go to the seven. Um, but in that house, I, I'm, I'm definitely not option one. Um, I wavered between that, that six, seven, eight option and then our option three. Which I, again, I don't have the other one that's got the six, seven, eight. The twenty-six, yeah. Maybe, you know, and I know we're getting into sense here, do they see it, but it's still just, I don't know, double digits, um. So, I, I'm down in the third option or into the six dollar, twenty-six fifteen, maximum twenty-five eighty-five, although. Yeah, yep.
Okay, Steve.
Well, I, I think Sarah's comment is, all of us were, were a little bit caught by surprise when we started talking about the actual cost. Of providing this service, uh, certainly I look forward to. Getting the information sheets that we can all share with our citizens, uh, in newsletters, uh, once this is rolled out. When you look at it from an apples-to-apples standpoint, if we give everybody everything that they have now. That would be the option two, uh, of thirty dollars and fifty-eight cents. So, I, again, I'm in line with what everybody else is talking about, uh, either the five or six dollars and the one I was probably leaning towards. Uh, would be the, go back to the slide with the three, first three options. The one I would lean towards, uh, would probably be the six dollars. Um, but again, I would be so bold as to take the twenty-six fifteen and round it down to twenty-six dollars. Have some nice clean round numbers as we roll this out, and if we need to make some tweaks in subsequent years. We can do that, but, uh, yeah, I think both of those, if you talk twenty-six dollars in that range for everybody. That's a lot better than thirty dollars and fifty-eight cents that they would be charged. And then everybody, if they elect into the curb, the yard waste curbside. You're talking thirty-two dollars, which is only slightly a buck and a half above thirty dollars and fifty-eight cents, so. I mean, again, if everybody pushes towards the five dollar, I can certainly support that. If I were to pick one, I'd probably lean towards, uh, the six dollar, just to keep the other household amount a little bit down on the lower side. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Right, Grant?
Yeah, so. My prior comments were, um, by virtue of my. Training as a, a electric utility guy, where. Um, you know, the, the subsidization factor was important in rate-making. We're kind of doing the same thing here, but there are such huge advantages to rolling out. This new system of waste management. For the residents, for our own employees, um, you know, the, the operating of our, our fleet. I mean, it's, we gotta do it, so. I think in order to ease the entry, uh, into the new system. I'm gonna get over my natural utility bias of worrying about any subsidization. So I'm, I'm in alignment with five or six dollars, um, and we can, the other thing that we may find. And I forget who brought this up, but container size or the availability of container size may in fact. Cause people. Who are not participating in yard waste collection, they may opt in over the next twelve months. And so what we really do is have a diagnostic process that we really understand what the interest of the community is. So, I'm good, uh, at five or six dollars, whatever seems to make the most sense.
Randy? Any thoughts?
I, I share the same sentiments, there's probably nothing different than what everyone else is experiencing, I just. Hate to see the, the monthly per household be subsidized, I keep looking at the seventy percent of the people that don't use. Uh, the yard waste and feel that that should be pushed a little bit more. You know, if, if we went to the exaggeration of, of the total opposite side of that of being at ten dollars, that's only two dollars and fifty cents per week. I realize you're only gonna use that eight or nine months out of the year, but it does. True up those costs a little bit more to where those services are actually, um, where they are. I look at the elderly who are maybe getting their yards mowed and, and, uh, they're not being bagged and fixed incomes and. And yet, the lower we go on the monthly subscription fees that pushes more liability back to. Everybody that shared, and it's not in equal proportion, so. You know, if the, if there was more than thirty percent of people using the yard waste, I would feel more comfortable with, uh, with being in agreements of the five to six dollar range. You know, in my mind, I'm still thinking, uh, seven to eight dollar range. And, uh, truing up a little bit more of the fees where they, they are rendered, and I totally agree with the city manager's concept. As we're still trying to navigate through areas where, um, we haven't been collecting appropriately. And again, too, these are, these are hard costs that are just being devised, um, across the platform of all of our residents. Uh, the city is not a profit center, so we don't work on gross margins or gross profits, these are hard costs that we have to deal with. And, um, you know, I would lean towards the seven to eight dollar and, and feel comfortable with that. I, and I realize those were free services in the past, so I'm not totally ruling that out, and I don't wanna be nonsensitive to those. But, um, I'm, I'm being a little bit more sensitive to the, the fixed income generation, that's, uh. You know, the, the majority of our, our residents at this point, so I'm. These are difficult decisions, and of course, we're splitting dollars here, I mean, we've even to look at the six to eight dollar range, we're only talking about twenty-six fifteen. Into twenty-five fifty-five, but, you know, to Will's point, we don't pay our bills monthly, we pay them every two months. And, and budgeting that is, does make a big difference on the fixed income, so, um. That's, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, and, and thanks for letting me share that.
Well, I think this has been a great discussion, and I, I really appreciate the thought that everyone's putting into this, and, I mean, everyone's got very valid points. Um, it, you know, the reality of it is. Y- y- you know, that, that, there are gonna be people who are gonna be completely shocked by the, by the increase and. Um, to the extent we're able to ease into it a little bit more, um. I mean, I'm, I'm for that, I'd probably, I, I fall in line with, you know, where Grant is, I think. Um, Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, it, it, the postscript I see that's, we're gonna have here under any case. Is, as we ramp the program in, at some point, we're gonna have to, if we, if we treat this as a unique. Uh, service, uh, option for our residents, at some point, we're gonna have to figure out what the right pricing is. So it can stand on its own two feet, uh, by those who are utilizing it. And again, I think we'll, we'll, we'll see some maybe subtle behavior changes in. People may decide I'm not gonna opt in, and, you know, they go out, they go to the yard waste facility and. Take out a can every other week or so, um, I, anyway. I just think at some point we're gonna have to deal with, uh, what the full, what the right mechanism for cost recovery is. Anyhow.
I, I get why we can't do it that, this way, but I, I still wish that it, that people would have the option to opt out rather than opt in. I think it, I think it's the perception of that is completely different. Um. But I understand why we can't.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, please.
Just, um, just, just from the, this, um, just two things, first of all, I do wanna make sure, um. Council, just, um, this is in the first time, this is the first time, I think, that, uh, I've been here, we've had. Um, such, we've dealt with a lot of big projects and initiatives. Uh, I think this is probably one of the biggest, given that it touches every single person in our community. So, um, I do wanna make sure that, um, you know, from the standpoint of staff, our responsibility to counsel is to be, um, give you all the information. Make sure you have the information to make those informed decisions, but from the standpoint of our recommendation, our recommendation is what it is. Because of the fact that, um, from, uh, the, um. The budgetary and how it's set up and the, the understanding of the enterprise funds. In no way are we suggesting by us having those recommendations that that is absolute way that the council must go. I think the, the discussion that you guys have had, um, both two weeks ago and today has been very helpful for us. Um, the, the feedback is extremely important, that's why we ran the different options for you, so I, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands. We, we are very well aware, um, that you as policymakers are, are the final say, um, and it, it. Um, is within your right, I just don't want any confusion as to why we are still recommending and. Um, it, it's, it's, the direction, um, the discussion was great, um. So that leads me to my other point, um, as part of the discussion, we've heard five and six, um, I don't know that we've got a clear majority on. One of those, so if we can get that, that clarity, that would help us, um.
Is, is there anyone strongly opposed to the six?
I would be, I would be in favor of a six before I would go, uh, lower, that's just, uh. Again, just, just one vote.
That's three and.
I know I said I was more the, the three B, but I would, I would be fine with the six.
Steve, I think you're a six too, right, no?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Anybody, Sarah, Gage, any strong opposition to six?
No strong opposition for me on six.
I'm going with six.
And thank you all, and then if I can just ask a follow-up question, Councilman Jensen suggested keeping it round numbers, any, any opposition to doing the round numbers?
I like the idea.
Makes sense. Hey, uh, Grant, I didn't wanna ignore that you had, uh, your hand up for a question, did you have anything to add or, oh, okay.
Uh, no, I, that was just a residual from earlier, and I, I'm aligned with six dollars too.
Okay, does that give, give us enough to? Go on and proceed.
Tim, Jeff, Matt, you guys good?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you all. Is our next item then, the discussion regarding financial statement preparation auditing services?
Yes.
Okay, Leanne?
Thank you. Our current contract with Hogan Hansen is through fiscal year twenty-twenty-four audit. As we look towards fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, we would like to go and, go ahead and issue. An RFP or line up the services, service contracts, so that we have some good figures going into the fiscal year twenty-six budget development. Um, on our last audit, council had asked a lot of questions about how do we get that segregation of duties? And financial statement preparation findings off of the audit. Um, in order to do that, we would need to be splitting out the financial statement preparation and auditing services, so two separate contracts. Both of those services right now are provided by Hogan Hansen, what staff is recommending and would need council's direction on. Is to go ahead and retain Hogan Hansen to do our financial statement preparation. The key reason being, we've been with Hogan Hansen for over thirty years, they have done all of our financial preparation up to this time. Point, and I've heard, as I've talked to other cities, that, uh, switching to a new auditor is very time-intensive. As they have to learn our systems, and like right now Hogan Hansen comes in, they know our systems, they know how to do things. We would be looking at doing that with two organizations if we split out, so. I'm looking for direction from council with the staff recommendation of allowing the purchasing policy exception. Meaning I don't need to go to an RFP for financial statement preparation, and then I can negotiate that directly with. Meaning I don't need to go to an RFP for financial statement preparation and that I can negotiate that directly with Cogan and Hansen. And then on auditing services, we would issue an RFP.
Okay, Steve and then Grant. Steve, you're muted.
So being being an old CPA, I understand exactly what Leanne and the city is dealing with. Me, the segregation of duties issue is not a major concern to me. I mean, there's so many. Natural statements and audits that are out there that have an opinion with that finding in it. So. Get rid of that completely usually requires adding staff. And most people are going to feel the benefit is not worth the additional cost. A lot of times you get an RFP for the auditing side. Either one, a lot of times that's just to say, all right, is the pricing of that CPA firm. In the market with what others are charging. So I would have to anticipate. An RFP for the auditing side. Hogan Hansen has done it for so long, they are so efficient with the audit. That they would I probably predict they would be the lowest. Dollar amount quote for an RFP as well. So. I don't see any concerns and I support what Leanne is trying to do.
Grant.
Leanne, what is the term of our engagement for Hogan Hansen? How long are we contracted with them for?
We're contracted through the fiscal year 2024 audit.
Okay. You know, and I I think I'm the. Bad person on this just because I know that audit finding has existed. For a few years. And I guess the question. That I would have is. Do you have any expectation of cost reduction by Hogan Hansen versus the added cost? Of a separate auditing firm? Do you have any intuition of what that trade off would be?
Well, and just making sure we're all on the same page. When I say financial statement preparation with Hogan Hansen. I'm talking about auditing with somebody different. So I'm saying we enter a contract with Hogan Hansen for financial statement preparation. And then we enter into a separate contract for auditing. I will also say that. Due to just the nature of the industry right now. Any Iowa Society of CPAs or AICPA conferences or registrations you go to. They want to see these services separate. They do not want them. In one contract. And lastly, I did check with some, not all of the comparable cities. Most of them do not actually have the segregation of duties or financial statement finding. They are either creating their financial statements internally. Or like the city of Dubuque has had the last couple of years, they've contracted out with two separate. Accounting firms.
So are you saying it's more a matter of that than it is having? More staff to segregate duties because I like Steve. I mean, I've been on council for ten eleven years now and. That's been the explanation every year is is it's mostly because we don't, you know, we don't have a big enough department where you can separate the duties. This is the first that I've heard. It's because of this, which I'm not doubting that this is correct. But you know, I I've just this is the first I've heard it.
Well, and when they say additional staff, bear in mind they're they're. In a lot of ways saying we don't have the staff capacity to prepare our financial statements in house at this point in time. So you would have to add additional staff in order for us to put together the financial statements. And so it is additional staff, and that's the segregation of duties with staff putting together the financial statements. And then the auditing firm is just auditing.
And it's mostly the financial statement preparation that's the issue?
Yes, and that that was what Jennifer Decker from Hogan Hansen verbalized when she came and gave the audit presentation and council asked that question.
Grant, you have something else?
I do. I I didn't really maybe answer the question that Leanne was fundamentally asking. I'm I would be fine to have a purchasing policy exception in order to continue forward with. Hogan Hansen for financial statement preparation and. And then for the auditing services go out on RFP.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, my personal opinion is I'm whatever whatever staff recommends here, I'm I'm fine with it. Anyone else have a different opinion? Okay. That is that what you need, Leanne?
That is what I need. In in a future meeting, you will eventually see a resolution providing for that purchasing policy exception. And then we'll sequence out timing as far as whether both contracts will be brought together or whether I do them separately. Ideally, we'll bring them both at the same time. So you'll have a comparison of where we were at and where we would be going overall with pricing.
Okay. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the city's application for energy efficiency and conservation block grant. Who's leading this one?
Mike is or Tom, you're on mute. Tom. Kim, or if you're with Tom, can you let him know he's on mute? As you can tell, Tom Jordan is with our public services department. He's in in charge of. Traffic signals. So he'll be talking about this item once. There we go.
Can you guys hear me?
Now we can hear you. Great. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. It just said I was muted. The grant is for seven six thousand dollars. Terrell, is there a map where all these are at? So the red dots are showing where all of our high pressure sodium light city lights are at. What we what we would do is. Let's see, from twenty ninth to the north is is there two hundred and fifty watt high pressure sodium lights. The pro the program that we are going with is no cost air to the city area and it's. Be the staff with light heads down, we would send them in to get retrofitted to LEDs. And the total cost for all this would be seventy three thousand dollars. So everything, so there should be no cost to the city. The main reason why we're looking to do this is these high pressure sodiums maintenance wise, they're. Quite a bit of maintenance and they're the bulbs are getting harder to find. Each of these are mere, we're actually paying whatever the cost is that we're losing. So like I said before, we're looking to save. On cost alone, changing these out. The deadline for this application is the end of the month. So we're trying to get direction from the mayor and council to go ahead with this. We have we have one year. Once we are accepted for this grant to get this done. I'm working with Mike Barcalo on this. Mike, do you get anything else that?
I would just say on Thursday, would you have a motion on city council? To direct us to move forward with applying for the grant. And then we actually have to put together a E E C S or a energy efficient conservation strategy. High level, what that's going to say is we want to convert every high pressure sodium light that we have externally to LED. And with that, then so that would be a resolution eventually that would come back to city council for approval. And then this is a voucher program, which means basically as we do the lights, we can ask for reimbursement as we go. So we don't have a. A large cash flow issue with the seven six thousand. So we are recommending proceeding with this program. There's not really a downside to it.
Yeah. Also, I'd like to add that we actually have because we'd have to send these heads in to get them retrofitted. We actually have sixteen of these at our shop right now, so there will be no blackouts. We would send the ones that we have. At public service, send them in to get retrofitted. As soon as they came back, we would replace them. So there will be no that we out during this time. As soon as we got the next sixteen, we'd send them in. They're talking about eight, ten weeks lead time to get these lights changed out. That's basically the the lights would the retrofit lights would have a five year warranty on them. Out of the factory. What's that?
Well, I appreciate you coming.
Basically, a lot less maintenance on on these the LEDs in the high pressure sodium lights.
Anyone have questions or have any? Opposition to proceeding with this? As Mike said, there there's no downside, so.
Is there any questions?
I don't see anyone with questions. Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom. Next item is the review of the upcoming agenda. And there are no items that are specifically marked by staff. For discussion. Are there any items on the agenda? That we need to discuss or that anyone has questions on? Council members. Go ahead, Grant.
Yes, thank you. I it's my singular question. And it is on consent agenda, the first section F two. And it's concerning the grant funding for Hawth Flats project. Where where is that? Just I just I forget where that's located.
Hawth Flats is located at the Eighth Avenue and Tenth Street. It's the parking lot. That was the former church site just north or just east of Fast Fuel.
Okay, all right, got it. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Other questions or items that need to be discussed? Steve?
Yeah, just briefly on item E two, that's the one to approve the twenty twenty four pavement. Patching project. And I see where the quote came in a hundred thousand dollars below the engineering estimate. Is there any discussion to try to do? I don't know. I can't remember how that was budgeted. Is there any discussion or contemplation to try to do a little more patching? Since that quote came in so much under the engineering estimate.
Uh, yeah, like anything, Steve, when we come, when our budget's set, we'll do a change order and we will add additional project if the contractor is willing.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Great. Anyone else on anything that needs to be discussed on the agenda? Questions we have before Thursday? Staff, anything else that needs needs to be? Discussed or brought up? On the agenda? I'm sorry?
Not from.
Oh, okay.
In my space here.
Okay. All right, then I guess that brings us to the end of the meeting. Appreciate everyone accommodating the virtual meeting today. And glad everyone's safe.
We'll see you on Thursday. Mayor, really quick, just just the the Chief Fagan has been keeping us up up to date. Lots of green rain for a while longer and nasty stuff has moved through. So really appreciate, like you said, Mayor. I'm glad everybody's safe and thank you to everybody for accommodating this and. Hopefully, we don't have to do this again on Thursday.
Yeah, I really on behalf of council appreciate your keeping us updated as all this was happening. The communication is great. Appreciate it.
Great team effort. Thank you all.
Thank you all, and we'll see you on Thursday.